Good afternoon. This is the regular meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Thursday, July 18th, 2024. Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Madam Recording Secretary, please take roll. Commissioner McNair?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez-Guerra? Commissioner Hernandez?
Present.
Thank you. We have quorum. Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And, pardon me. At this time, members of the public may address the Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Please note that if you have a public comment, you have three minutes, and our recording secretary will keep time. Madam Recording Secretary, does the public have any comments they wish to share? Yes. Victor, you can come up.
Oh, Arts Commission, I just wanted to speak about the mural guidelines. It's about time. I know this has been in the process for several years, and I'm glad that you all took the attention to provide some guidelines. I think it's important to know that murals have a strong tradition in Santa Ana and California culture, very important to communities, and the battle for walls is very political, especially in the downtown. So having some guidance in how communities can interact with artists and protect themselves, and artists can be protected too. The compliance with state and federal law is really critical. The awareness, working with the city. I know that I made a recommendation that, in terms of the graffiti removal, that the city provide resources for artists to paint their murals to remove graffiti. If there's money to send a graffiti crew to just kind of obliterate it, there should be money used from that program to help paint the artists or pay the artists to fix it. And that takes the weight off of the city and also brings more community input and the artist. So, yeah, it's just an important day. And with the time I have left, I've just, we've got a lot of great events coming up for Media Arts Santa Ana. We've got a podcasting workshop with Darren De León, Podcasting for the People, on Saturday. We have a Votos Locos video game launch that I'll be talking about later on the 27th. We have our Film Festival coming up in October, starting the 5th. And we have a weekly open mic the first Saturday of the month. And we currently have Native Nations in L.A. photo exhibit by Pamela J. Peters, who's a California Creative Corp recipient. Thank you.
Any additional public comments? All right, thank you. This is a time for the Commission to consider matters under Consent Calendar, item number one. Do I have a motion to consider item number one?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the matter is approved by unanimous consent. We have one item under the Business Calendar, item number two, for the election of officers for the Arts and Culture Commission for the 2024-25 term. So at this time, I am opening the election of officers. If there is more than one nomination for an office, we shall vote by ballot. And I'm going to open the nominations for chairperson, and I'm going to start by nominating Indigo Wu to be chair. Are there any other nominations? Okay. If there are no further nominations, the nominations are now closed. I motion that Commissioner Wu be named the next chairperson effective August 1st, 2024. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Madam Recording Secretary, will you please take roll call on the vote?
Actually, we'll take vote when we do for vice chair as well.
Okay. Perfect. We will now proceed with nominations for vice chairperson. And I'd like to start the nominations by nominating Commissioner Hernandez to be the vice chair. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay. Hearing none, the nominations are now closed. I motion that Commissioner Hernandez be named the next vice chairperson effective August 1st, 2024. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. So now, Madam Recording Secretary, we'll take the vote. Or not.
I'll take a vote for, excuse me, for chair and vice chair if I have a motion to approve.
I think we had that. Okay. Well, so moved.
So moved.
Aye, so moved.
And then second, we have Commissioner Wu?
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passed.
All right, congratulations. I look forward to our next leadership. Now we're moving on to the Work-Study Session. We have two items under Work-Study Session. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on these items. The first item under Work-Study Session is investing in the Artist Grant 2023-24 Grantee Presentations. So, Tram, would you please introduce who we have tonight?
Thank you, Chair McNair. Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce the, there'll be four people presenting today. I will start with Stephen Homestead.
Thank you. I want to thank the Arts and Culture Commission and Tram and her team for helping me and the other artists navigate this wonderful grant opportunity. I'd like to share about my project, Be My Neighbor: Sami Visina, which took place on April 6th, 2024. It was created by roughly 35 community members in our community, and it added to a project that has been in existence for about six years. Participants will draw a house and paint a house, trading it with a neighbor at a table. And as author and justice advocate Bob Goff says, "The world is made of neighbors." Next slide, please. You can see some visual examples on the screen of some of the participants. These are the posters that were put up in the city. I was doing this project in partnership with the Downtown Neighborhood Association. Denise Reynoso was a partner from the community, and we promoted it through social media, through the Downtown Santa Ana Art Walk newsletter, posts on Facebook and Instagram. So it was really fun to see people engage with the project who found out about it beyond my sphere of influence. Next slide, please. So we had families coming in. You can see the watercolor sets where they engaged with painting. The houses that they drew could be anything that they wanted. So people drew a SpongeBob house or an underwater house. Next slide, please. This family actually found out about the project because she was also a grant recipient with the same grant. And so one of the great things about this is it didn't just benefit the people who participated, but it had a ripple effect. So other artists in the community found out about each other through this project. Next slide, please. Just more images of the participants. I'm grateful to She They Gallery for the in-kind donation of the basement space in the Santora Building and Saddleback Visual Arts for some of the supplies. Next slide, please. You can see an example of someone holding up their houses before the gold was added. So part of the project was turning the installation into a big neighborhood on the wall of basement space in the Santora Building that served as a gallery during the art walk. Next slide, please. I would say that the intangibles of the project beyond the dozens and dozens of people who participated are seeing faces like this, the pride, the feeling of value, the feeling of community and belonging that participants had. So you can go through the next slides. These are some houses that people chose to draw. You see a habit house, a hobbit house, a tent, a child's watercolor. There's a lot of vibrancy to them. Next slide, please. Here's a person who was born in Japan and immigrated to the United States, drew a cultural heritage house. A different person painted that, and then it was surrounded by gold. Next slide, please. So here you can see how the installation starts to grow on the wall. As more people participate, more houses go up. Next slide. Next slide again. There is Denise Reynoso. Next slide. Keep going. It's almost full. And a few more. This is an example of just while in the community discovering the other grantees. This is a project Peggy Iriarte did. Next slide. Also Diana Farrell with Lyric Opera OC. I found out about that through being a grant recipient. So just that idea of being a part of this cohort was a real blessing. Next slide. And there's the conclusion of the project in this iteration. So you can see all the houses that went up. So thanks again to the Arts and Culture Commission and to the City of Santa Ana.
Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, if there's any comments or questions from the commissioners?
Well, thank you for that community engagement and the beautiful leading us to connections and all the ways that we recognize and build inclusivity throughout our city. We really appreciate that, and I really appreciate working with the neighborhood associations and looking at the inner child of each person who was engaged in making the art, right? Because that, whatever age they are, the joy that we have in sharing what we're creating and doing that together. So we appreciate your activation in the community, and I'm sad I had to miss it. I had to be at a convention, so that was unfortunately not when I was able to be here. But thank you.
Thank you.
Next time.
Next time. It has been at Dana Point, Anaheim, Santa Ana, and it was at an international festival in Grand Rapids, Michigan. So it continues to grow and flourish the more it takes place.
Wow, that's great.
Thank you.
Are you going to have a permanent installation anywhere or have to find a space?
This one will continue to be nebulous and pop up wherever it's needed, yeah. But the way that the gold goes on to the paint paper makes it really effective to last a long time. Yeah.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Jasmine Soleil.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for being here. I'm super grateful to be here to present to you guys. My name is Jasmine, and this is my grant project called Create From the Heart. So I start off with just a little bit about me. I started my artist journey here in Santa Ana as a young student in 2007. I currently live in Santa Ana now with my four-year-old boy. I just graduated from Cal State Fullerton. Next slide, please. I'm a mixed media artist, but my favorite mediums are ceramics, painting, printmaking, and collage. I facilitated workshops and group classes in a women's prison. I've been working in healing arts for the past two years. I currently run daily groups for kids and teens ages eight to 17. And I was previously the president of the Art and Social Justice Club at Cal State Fullerton. Next slide, please. So the purpose of Create From the Heart was to bring healing arts workshops to Santa Ana for populations that have historically held strong stigmas against seeking mental health help, such as those that are system impacted, like the women's prisons, immigrant families, families living in poverty. And these workshops aim to educate on the ways to live healthier and happier lives through using visual arts as a way to manage like stress and depression and coping with, you know, life stressors. And we do this through visual arts practices, social emotional learning, and self-expression. These group workshops help build social skills and visual communication and mutual support. And then the participants are always encouraged to bond with each other, especially to make connections with other people that are leading like healthier lifestyles. Awesome. So my timeline of the project, it has evolved a little bit since I had originally proposed it. January through May, I ended up holding workshops specifically at OSEA, and it went really well. We had an average of 16 participants per class. I was able to collect entrance and exit surveys, so I got some feedback from the kids, and you'll see some of that later on. In June, I set up a booth at the Downtown Santa Ana Art Walk so that we could promote the classes that come in the future and also provide a space for the kids to sell their art. So they were very proud to see that up. And then July through October, so my first workshop that's open to everybody in Santa Ana is going to be this upcoming Friday on the 26th. And I will be focusing on different themes. So like this next one will be on freedom, but each month is going to be different. And come November, I will be setting up at the Downtown Santa Ana Art Walk again to provide a space for these people to sell their work and just be in community together. And then the final workshop planned is going to be in December, and it's going to focus on creating holiday crafts and just discussing the impact of the program and how we can like use these themes and these projects to help us in the long run. Next slide, please. So these are just some of the examples of the projects that we did. This is a neurographic art activity, used watercolors and Sharpies, and the kids love this one. Next slide, please. So some of the feedback that I got from the kids. I asked in their surveys, "How do you feel after today's workshop? Did your mood change from when you first came in?" And we got, "I felt more relaxed, from stressed to calm. Yes, now I feel happy." One kid put that they felt more talented. And then, "At first, I was excited. Now I feel happy." Next slide, please. So we did a project where they painted plant pots and were able to like get their hands dirty with the dirt and plant succulents and learn how to take care of these as we learn to take care of ourselves. It's just another way to reinforce these positive habits within them. Next slide, please. So the activities. We started the year with giving out art journals and encouraged these kids to journal as much as possible and gave them some journal prompts to think on, especially relating to their goals and dreams. We gave portfolios as well, so like physical portfolios for them to put their artwork in and expressed how important those are if they do want to become artists, if they want to try and get into OSHA or something like that to have a portfolio. And I also taught them some information on how to photograph their work so that they can have digital portfolios as well. And then some of the projects specifically that we did, like I showed was the neurographic art, the painting pots and planting succulents. They learned how to paint with acrylics and how to mix color themselves. Painting with watercolor is stress relief. We had discussions on healthy love, discussions on appreciating different cultures, et cetera, et cetera. So this is some more examples of the kids just doing their art. And you can see on the right, that's a picture of one of the art portfolios that everybody got. Go to the next slide. And then some other feedback. So I asked if they enjoyed today's class when they were exiting, and they said, "Yes, because I got to laugh with my friends. I did enjoy class because I love art. Yes, because I got to make my own painting. And yes, because it was so calm." So I think that's all. That's just some more pictures for you guys to see the classroom that we were in and some more of the work that they did. So thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jasmine. Any comments or questions from the commissioners?
Yeah. Thank you so much for this. I really love, you know, the concept and the comments really just reinforces, you know, just how impactful and important and necessary, you know, this kind of, these kind of projects are. You said that the next one will be in July?
26th, so next Friday.
Where?
It's going to be actually right across the street at the Civic Center Tower Plaza building, like directly across the street. It's going to be on the ninth floor in Suite G. I have made some flyers for it as well. I did not bring them today. I should have. But I was promoting that at the last art walk as well. I was doing live painting, and I had flyers out and was trying to spread the word and be in community with other artists. So I'm hopeful that we'll have a good turnout.
If you can, email me that flyer, and then I'll forward it to the commissioners.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, that way we can share it.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
And it's open to anyone, right?
Yes, yes, to anybody. Family, family-friendly. I did put on the flyers for kids over the age of 10 just because I don't want it to become like too crazy in the room with like little ones running around and kind of messing up. But if somebody is there with their kids and they need to bring their little one, I'm okay with it too. And just, you know, try to keep it as chill as possible.
I just want to commend you for not just creating these really unique art experiences for our youth, but the added element of the portfolio and thinking about how do you share your work with others? Because I know a lot of artists who are really excited about that. They don't feel like they get support in that necessarily. So introducing that as a part of the workshops is just a great element, and I just want to commend you for that.
Thank you so much.
I also want to say, because anybody who works with me on the regular knows, I always reference this book called Your Brain on Art. And it's research base about how important it is, and you're in the arts and healing, on so many levels. So this is a living example of what that looks like, and especially as you're addressing like neurographics and neurodivergence. I think embracing and the inclusivity aspect of it is really beautiful. So I'm looking forward to that because I want to distribute to the families in our community.
Thank you so much.
So hopefully they'll engage in these activities.
I would be really looking forward to that. I'm super excited to branch out to more people beyond OSEA. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate you.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Priscilla Hernandez. And Priscilla, can you help me? How do you pronounce your organization? Yo, Yoteoto?
Yoteot.
Yoteot.
Yeah. It's Nahuatl. It's God's heart, I believe. So my name is Priscilla Hernandez. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you guys. I've been doing the Women's Day Festival for 12 years already. So this March 2024 was the 12th anniversary of the International Women's Day in Santa Ana. So for the 12 years, it's been in Santa Ana, and I've gotten grants from the city probably at least like five, five, six times. So, yeah, it's, it's been very helpful having the support from the city. So, yeah, I was at the Kaia Fourth Street Plaza, and we had vendors, workshops, speakers, and all kinds of activities. Next, please. Some of the interactive performances was like this one here that you see by Sofia Iztar. She did Egyptian dance. So we tried to incorporate some performances that also can have participation of the audience. Next one. Also Margarita Kleiman. She plays, she's a musician and a teacher. And she was teaching us some indigenous songs and pre-Hispanic music and instruments. So you can see here, she invited some of the audience to play with her too. And at the same time, teaching us. Also meditation and tea workshop. Lynette is from Long Beach, and she came to teach a little bit about teas and how to use them for health and wellbeing purposes. Next. Meschika came to play Lotería, a game in Nahuatl. So people were, yeah, she was there for a couple hours, and people were playing different games for a while. So you can see there was all ages, anyone could join, and they were learning the indigenous language as well. So that was an experience. And then right here, we have more pictures, the DJ and Mariachi youth group that participated. Next. This is a side view of the event and when the mariachi was playing. We had a poet, Santana Natalia Valles, reading from her book. Then also a performance by violinist Julie Oka. And she is an artist. She's been in Santa Ana, visiting us many times. And also Midwife Paket Sunny, she's also from Long Beach, and she came to teach about healing, touching your wounds. So, yes, very knowledgeable people. And next, please. Okay, yes, we also had vendors and artist makers selling their crafts. So you can see some people there. They made candles or crocheting items and different artwork by Peggy also. Yes, next one. And some organizations participated, tabling and selling their things. Also, our friend here with oils and crystals was selling some things as well. And very, a lot of the time, you know, the photographer got a lot of nice moments. People networking, meeting each other, like the musician with the vendor there and the other two ladies that, they're from KPFK, but they actually came and, you know, got to talk to each other over here. Next one, please. And a lot of more beautiful moments here when the meditation and people just meeting other people, having conversations. If you can, next one. Some moments of the kids playing around and their kids enjoying the day. And then right here, we have Frosty and Sammy Love, which are Santa Ana hip-hop artists. And they're very great artists. So it was a pleasure to have them too, in an honor, and they actually got to play together as well. So if you can go to the next one. And at the end of the night, we had the Centonados. It's a rockabilly band from Mexico, and it's a couple with, with, they started with their kids. So they've been at our event many times, closing the night. So it was really nice to have them again. And, yeah, there was a lot more pictures, of course, that I could have included, but I'm still sharing them on the Instagram page if you want to see them. And, yeah, thank you to, again, to your help and the Artist Grant. I was able to make this better, you know, every year, and it's going. I wanted to have a lot more people participate, but at the end, it was like already too many. You know, we had like, I don't know, a lot, there was like seven, six workshops and a lot of performances. There was childcare. And also the organizations sharing their information was really nice. And it's always a really beautiful event, open to everyone, and it's for everyone to participate. So it's educational and fun. Yeah. Any questions?
Thank you, Priscilla. Any questions or comments, commissioners?
Thank you for sharing, Priscilla. This was so wonderful to see. I feel like, in general, there are different Women's Days events that have the appearance of being a little bit more closed off, and I really, really appreciate it just how inclusive, how meaningful the engagement was, your event was to so many different people within our community, and how thoughtful and like thought through everything was. Like you shared, there was like childcare, there was networking. It just, it seemed like such a lovely day. So thank you so much for all of your hard work to put this event together. I know putting events together is a lot more difficult than people think it is. And thank you so much for your like continued work to do this for our community.
Welcome. Thank you to you guys as well.
Yeah, I just wanted, you could take. Yeah, I've known Priscilla for many years, and, yeah, she, before she got, you know, this funding in more recent time, you know, she was just a volunteer and I cared about highlighting women, you know, women's issues through El Centro Cultural de México and on her own. So it's just, those are the kinds of amazing projects that I feel proud So it's just, those are the kinds of amazing projects that I feel proud to fund and invest in, because we're investing literally in our community members that have been here doing the work before there was even funding for it. So yeah, I just want to thank Priscilla and all her team for all her years of effort in this. I was able to stop by for a little bit, and you know, and yeah, you know, she was like running around or, you know, just trying to, you know, talk to all the people and keep all the vendors happy. And yeah, it's a labor of love. I've, as somebody that's did events for many years with El Centro and, you know, volunteering, it's a lot, it's weeks and months of work. And it's, you know, but ultimately, and you hope that people show up, and sometimes, you know, the attendance is not what you want it to be, but you know, it's just one of those things where you, we have to continue to help promote and build, you know, the awareness and so that we have every year more people and new people coming to these types of events. So yeah, it was great to see Frosty up there, or, you know, locally grown talent, you know, Panket Sani, who now is an author, and, you know, being able to promote, you know, you know, just birthing and indigenous medicine and healing and practices. Yeah, it's, I can't say enough about how great and the variety of the different workshops and performances, you know, that were a part of it. So thanks again, and I'm anticipating and hopeful for next year's, that it's gonna be bigger and better and more, you know, more attendance than this year.
I love that, you have me hooked. I was hooked with Mexican rockabilly. Like that's, the fusion is a beautiful concept. All of it sounds phenomenal, so I'll make it a point. You'll send us the information to come next year. We have more presentations?
Yes, the final one is Victor Payan from MASA.
Hello. I'm gonna present on our Votos Locos video game, and before I started, I wanted to thank the city for their support of the arts with this grant that surpassed $1 million in this last cycle, I believe. Hopefully they'll fund it, you know, at the same level coming, going into it. I know we're facing a financial cliff, a fiscal cliff, but to reiterate that the investment in the arts is an investment in the economy of the city, the future of the city. We see projects like Priscilla's that are going on 12 years that were made possible to have that longevity with the support of the city, because it's so expensive to operate in Orange County. And we, with our space MASA, the one thing we keep hearing time and time again is that the number one issue with being an artist in Orange County and San Ana is access to space. So we allow our space to be used for free, and the work that we did here is a result of relationships we've built over the past two years there on our space at 17th and Main. So to move forward, we did create a video game called Votos Locos, because this campaign season is very loco, and we wanted to try to do something that was retro. So as we decided upon a style and a look that we could do within our timeline, our budget and our skill set, we really liked games from the like 80s and early 90s. So I think we have a video of gameplay at the end, I think you'll really like it. But the idea was to inspire voters, to get them to play it, to have it be fun, to be cathartic, to be inventive, and to have a lot of the local culture and artwork and history in there as well. And we found out that that was the case. Next slide. The goal of the game is to walk people through the actual voting process, from registering, attending a community rally, block walking, and casting a vote, and to kind of demystify it, but also let people know that there are hard deadlines that you need to. Like if you want to vote but you don't register, then you can't vote. And we wanted to appeal to disenfranchised voters, first-time voters, young voters, new immigrant, you know, new American voters. With the funding from the city, we're translating it into English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. And the target audience was 14 and up, because we figured 14-year-olds would have fun playing it, but they could also share it with their older relatives. Next slide. So we started out figuring out who the villains would be, and we based them on actual, real-life challenges to voting. And so first, we tried to personify them, and that's me using AI to try to figure, because I can't really draw. So we did internet trolls, cyber ninjas, Russian bots, Maga Marji, the QAnon shaman, and a bare-chested Putin, because we had to have that in there. And then our developer, Brian, it was his task, and I worked with him on the character design, to make those real and fun. So next slide. So it's part of our Dreamocracy in America project, which has been going on since 2019 with creative capital funding, and we've done videos and memes and Facebook campaigns in different states. We did a big Lucha Libre thing in Arizona last year. So this is all within that, and we were able to use some of the characters we created in that, in the game. Next slide. It also comes from real-world experience. My partner, Pochapena, ran for city council, and we've worked on Supervisors Sarmiento's last three or four campaigns. And so we come with real-world knowledge about what the challenges are, what, you know, what makes a campaign work, and what inspires people. So these are some of the graphics we did for Pocha's campaign, the next one. And then there was one that somebody else did, which, you know, kind of showed that the campaign really touched people's hearts in a way that inspired them to be creative. And so the idea that a campaign, that a candidate can be a superhero to people, is something that we put in the game as well. So our team, next slide. Like I said, people from OC Indy's video game group that's been meeting monthly at our space for a year, they're a very diverse group. The video game development field is not very diverse, but this group is. And then we've got Suave Cito Foundation, their Youth in Government program. Moises Vasquez is doing the music, David Persley, who's also a grant recipient, is doing the art. We've worked with the residents of the SAC building, and in our work with MASA, we were working with three other grant recipients to do their programs as well during this time. Next slide. So we wanted to make a world that was diverse, we wanted to create the world that we wanted to live in, and we have multiple ways that you can choose your own avatar, your head, your hair, you could be in a wheelchair, you can be in a skateboard, and then we randomized that to create the NPCs, non-player characters. And what turned out was like the most diverse world we'd ever seen in a video game. And it's so fun, because it's fun just to watch the characters, to design your own character, not just the character that represents you, but the character that represents who you want to be, like your idealized self. It's really fun. And then we did booths to do the same thing. So next slide. We had fun with creating the booths. So these are groups that we want to exist in the political world, so the Pink Panthers, Women's Vote, The Girl Vote, Vietnam, Don't Worry, Be Happy, Punk the Vote, it's a real thing we're doing, Able to Vote for People with Disabilities, For the Youth Vote, we had a Bowie thing, We Can Be Heroes and Young Americans, The Lavender Fam with their slogan, Yes, We Can, Affordable Housing, we're a booth for police oversight, a booth for African-Americans, et cetera. So, but we thought like, we want people to start actual groups based on these, and wear t-shirts of these groups. I would, I would wear all them. Next slide. And so the characters, the villains, we looked at like what's real out there, internet trolls, the QAnon shaman, Marjorie Taylor Greene bots. We put ninjas in there because of the cyber ninjas, and they actually throw stars at you, the lizard people, you have to have them in there, and Putin. And when we did Putin with a bare-chested Putin, our developer said, can he be on a horse? And we're like, yes, he can be on a horse. So we just wanted to have fun, because these are real things that we want people in, the experience of fighting them when they interact with them in the real world, even though they're not physical, actual things that they confront, they're psychological, they're emotional, they're part of their creative reality in the voting process. So if you know internet troll, gotta fight it, you know, social, you know, media bot, when I see it, I gotta fight it. This is, they can do that symbolically, and we made it fun. Next slide. So, like I said, all this is happening at our space MASA, where we have the TVGB Digital Media, Makerspace, the Film Festival, Film Fiesta, the Smart Walk, South Main Art Retail and Technology, Dia del Niño Festival that we work on with Arts OC, the Millennial Producers Academy, and we just opened Masarte Gallery. This project brought all of these communities together, and we're super excited, and our outreach has got to do the same. So we're still looking for outreach partners, we're working with Suave Cito, like I said, we're working with Latino Health Access, we're working with high school students, college students. So any groups that you know, please send them our way so that we can work with them. Next slide. Smart Walk, we're releasing the game next Saturday, June 27th, hopefully you can all make it, 6 o'clock at El Barco, which used to be the old ship over on 17th by SAC, now owned by the Suave Cito guys, really great seafood place, fun place to hang out. And then we're having our Smart Walk later this year also, where we'll be promoting it there with the Orange County Musicians Association. Next slide. These are just some of our programs, there's the Smart Walk, you know, Art Retail and Technology, youth, next slide. Okay, this is just some work with, we do with TVGB, there's, we do films with youth and seniors. The bottom left is a Latino writers' group, National Writers Group, that was here for a national conference in Anaheim, and they were looking for a space to meet, so we had a mixer for them, and there were like 30 people from all over the country there, writers, publishers, and a lot from San Ana, too, that knew the conference was coming to town, but didn't know that there would be a local component. So we like to network people. Next slide. And there's just some more slides, there's the Cafe MASA, which is every week, every Thursday, we're having it tonight, it's networking and a free Wi-Fi and coffee, the Indies Developer Group. There's a, the picture you see there was early on, it's like more than 30 people coming from LA Riverside, Orange County, to talk about video game developers. And we have Norm's across the street, so the event goes till about 10:30, and then you've got like 15 people going across to Norm's to dream up the future, and it's like free parking and $3 coffee, and we're just so excited that that's the kind of creative development, the dreams that can come out of the work that we're doing at TVGB. Next slide. There's our Film Festival, there's Herbert Seguenza, Pepa Serna, some youth from the Indian community, the trans community, what is it, Chapman Youth Media Program. So these are, you know, with all these people, come to our space, you can meet all these people. Next slide. And we like to teach, Youth Millennial Producers Academy, next slide, Milpa 2.0, which was, we figured out that, you know, it's great to focus on youth, but once people graduate high school, there's no opportunities, there's no jobs. So we wanted to be a connector, so Milpa 2.0 was designed to be like 18 to 25, but we had seniors in there, so it was like 18 to question mark, question mark, question mark. Next slide. So we were teaching people, business people, artists, artists who were trained in physical arts, how to use technology. And the guy in the bottom there, Joseph, he's an origami artist, does really great work, and he did a video on origami, but he was doing it on his phone, using editing equipment, and I can't work with my phone, I need a keyboard. And I said, well, I was looking at him working, he was just like really adept, and I said, do you realize that you spent your whole artistic career making paper art like this, and now you've just got a phone in your hand, and you're using a video with the same motor skills? And he's, because he had no experience before, but he really excelled in this, he's got a really great video, and so that's what we like to do. Next slide. So Pochapena and I, interdisciplinary artists, creative capital, been doing this, you know, for 25, 30 years, and like I said, this was a chance to bring a lot of our projects together, Keep on Crossing, what else is in there? Asta Gold with Lucha Libre, and all these kind of things that we do in actual political art and interventions, we were able to like inform the game with them. And so next slide, I think, is the game, you'll check it out, I hope you'll enjoy it. It's fun to play, you can play it at votoslocosgame.com, starting the 27th, or dreamocracyinamerica.org, but hopefully you'll come to El Barco on the 17th and play it there, and get some great appetizers, so enjoy. Okay, Moisés did a cumbia and a norteño in old 8-bit style, and we figured there probably wasn't a cumbia in video games yet. And in the end, it was important that all the people, when we started the game, the initial move was to high-five people, and then we realized that everyone wanted you to fight, so then we realized that as the election season is going on more and more, the need to kind of defend yourself is probably real as well. But we wanted all the people that you high-fived to come join you at the end to vote, so that's the building of community, bringing it all together. And like I said, just the diversity that we built into this, we're really proud of it, and everyone who's played it thought it's been super fun, and that was our primary goal, to create a game that was fun, because if it wasn't fun, people wouldn't play it. So hopefully we'll see you on the 27th. Any questions?
I just had a question, by the way, that's really remarkable, I was chuckling the whole time, very witty. I saw Juan Villa there, Mr. Villa, he's in the picture with Lupe. Do you know?
At the Film Festival?
There was a picture with Lupe and yourself and Villa.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is, was he there because of his son?
No, that was, I think, I think that was our opening, we had a blessing, an indigenous blessing of the space, and he was there for that, I believe.
Okay.
That was like in 2021, like June of 2021.
Oh.
Or 2022, I can't remember, the years are flying by.
Yeah, it was good to see a lot of different people that were participating. I know the Chapman, the Media Youth Project with Jorge, and, you know, some local person, and Suave Cito Foundation, and it's good to see our former mayor as well being supportive, you know, and still involved in the arts and things, so yeah, congratulations.
Thank you. It's really important in all the work that we're doing to bring the communities together, you know, and have a safe place for everyone to interact and meet each other and network and have fun.
I too want to congratulate you. It's been almost 10 years, right, since you've launched MASA, well, the programming that, when we started talking about it, and it's been amazing to watch it grow and all the programming that you have and what you're bringing to our community. So thank you for all the work that you're doing, it's really appreciative, appreciated.
Thank you, and we, you know, interconnect with you and the schools and all the groups here, and it's been a priority of ours, as part of our mission, to have the programs be free, and we've been pretty successful at that, and the game is free, too, you can play it for free anywhere in the country.
Is it playable in browser, or is it like a download?
It's playable in browser, and so you can do it on a tablet, a phone, or a laptop. Right now, we're housing it on a server, but we're looking to see if we can move it to Steam, or like, once we figure out what the demand is, like how to make it as playable as possible. But this is the easiest thing to do right now, is just to have it all in one place, and then scale up from there. But we've had interest from people in Texas and Arizona also in using it.
Yeah, it reminds me of some other like indie games I've seen off of like itch or other platforms like that. But again, I also want to echo the other commissioners and really commend you on this. I think as an idea, it's very easy for it to fall into the trap of cheesiness and for it to like lean in all the way into like full entertainment and education also, I think is so important, especially as we see across the country, democracy getting attacked in so many different ways. We need to really reaffirm our commitment to expanding democracy in as many ways as we can.
Thank you, thank you. And that's one of the things that we wanted to be from the beginning, and I think this is, you know, Pocha's, you know, contribution to our work, is she says, it needs to be cathartic, and that really helps people, because given how serious the environment is right now, apathy, disenfranchisement, discouragement, sadness, depression are probably the biggest threats to democracy, other than the actual threats, or these electronic threats that we're seeing, or the psychological threats. So to give somebody a tool, it's just fun to wail on fake ninjas and, you know, internet bots or whatnot, but it also, you know, makes you aware, and that's, so yeah, thank you, we tried to fit a lot in there, and I think we've succeeded, but really got to give props to our team who, you know, took our ideas and made them reality, because we don't know coding, this is a new area for us, but to build that community where it could be done, you know, the gamers were telling us, you know, a game takes like four years to develop, and we're like, well, we got one, let's do it, see what we can do. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Victor. And just to remind everybody, that concludes the artist-grantee presentations, so you're welcome to stay or go if you have to.
Again, we're so grateful to everybody who came and presented to help us document and provide information to the community so they can see where the city's investments are going and how our community is activated and expanded and the populations and voices that we're reaching. And we're grateful as a commission. I'll speak on behalf of myself, also the expressions of my fellow commissioners, that we get to support these opportunities. So, and to our staff who make it happen. Because it's a lot, we understand. We thank you in particular, Tram, for all the work that you've done to support our grantees. So, all right. Well, moving on, the second item under our Work Studies session is the mural guidelines discussion. I want to start by saying that we will just be entertaining a discussion. There will be no decisions made today. And we'll continue to provide opportunities for more folks in the community to offer feedback about the murals and the mural guidelines. Because as we've seen, it's been a very, as was mentioned in comments earlier, it's a very vibrant part of our community. And so we want to continue to discuss all the ways that we can make this an important part of what we do as an advisory commission and leaving the window open and encourage more voices to be heard. And actually invite folks to think about ways that they can come together to provide written feedback to the commission. So however, people can come together on their own. So that to say, I open it up to discussion and input. So who would like to begin? It's a sign.
If I may. Yes. So I was part of the mural ad hoc committee along with our former colleague many years ago. I'm forgetting his name, a gentleman that moved to Texas. Yeah, Hernando, who was himself a muralist. And his, in particular, his observations and his, you know, hi, his guidance through that process was, was truly helpful. So, so that, you know, I do want to highlight that and not let that be lost as we, you know, have this conversation. There was a muralist at the table when, when these discussions were made. Of course, you know, there's a lot more input all the time that we can and should, you know, perceive from the community when it comes, you know, to the murals. There's just, you know, as I mentioned last week, and I don't want to, you know, repeat myself, but we all have a difference of opinion when it comes to like good art or not so good art or culturally relevant art or, or plastic corporate art. You know, it just, there's, there's a lot, right? But I do feel that, you know, the conversation perhaps gets convoluted between the public art and the private art. Or, or better said, the, the art that is on a private property, like somebody owns a building and it's their building, and they have a lot, all the rights to, to say what is put and not put. And public, which is community owned, city owned, i.e. community owned. We, the residents, should have all the say in, in what, you know, is, is, is shared through that. It should be a collective process, you know, to, to survey to the community, to bring stakeholders to the table so that all voices are heard as far as public art. I believe this in particular was, you know, the, the guidelines wasn't, was for public art specifically. Is that correct?
Correct. That was, this is, this is a document for art on public, own, city owned walls.
Yeah.
And also a guideline for developers who are thinking about putting murals on there.
Yeah. Suggestions, right? But because at the end of the day, they, they have the final say. And as I mentioned last week, there's, I remember, yeah, I remember murals being put up and that there was a lot of community backlash when, when they came up. And yeah, I'm just not going to name names or say where or stuff. But, you know, and there's, was recently, you know, like murals that were put up with a different kind of art than what was there before. And I'm just like, this is, I don't really feel it. I don't know if it really goes with and I preferred what it was there before. But in any case, I think we should do a lot to try to, yeah, to, to just separate the two items and, you know, to, but, but really strengthen and, and, you know, create. If it takes an ordinance, you know, which that would not happen here. That would happen at the city council meeting, right? With our commit, with our city council members, that we each can, you know, were appointed by and can petition them to, to bring this up to, to them so that there is strict guidelines. Because it was brought up and, and I agreed, like, with, with, you know, Victor brought up that there's, when I see graffiti on walls, I make a report. That graffiti is gone that day or like no more than like two days, I think. I rarely two days, it's usually the next, by the next day, it's gone. If there's graffiti on, you know, our public art, that should be covered up and used. And, and there should be funding that can, that is there for just general graffiti that can be used to, to clean this up. So, so I'm, I'm interested in, in that being a part of it. I'm definitely supportive and, and interested in making sure that when public art is, is funded, that, you know, that layer of protection that then guards it against, or that it makes it easy to remove graffiti when it's graffitied over, which happens all the time, that that is like mandatory. Like it has to be a part of it. Because, you know, we, we spend all this time and all this beautiful art, and then it gets graffitied over, and then it just stays there. And then, and that's unfortunate. And there's so many, unfortunately, murals all over the city that have graffiti all over them, and it's there forever. And nothing changes because it's expensive at this point because they weren't properly taken care of with this. I believe before, we had even talked about creating some sort of task force of youth or interested people that can help with the cleanup of, of these murals. So, and, and many other things. It's, it was a long time ago. This was, I think, before COVID, you know, just things, they're just not working that good up here anymore. And it's been, it's just, you know, a lot happened during COVID. So, so, so yeah, so I, I think that's important. And, you know, lastly, but again, guidelines, suggestions for private art, for in private buildings. There's, I don't believe that this commission or the council can do much to enforce any kind of things. But I'm, I'm always, you know, wanting to hear from my fellow commissioners, but the community at large, especially the muralist community, the artist community, to see how we can best advocate for you in our positions here, but also with our council members so that we can, you know, continue to, to push for, to protect this issue that can be divisive, but it can also be unifying if we are able to compartmentalize the, the conversation in the best way. So those are my comments. Thank you.
And thank you for reminding us that this is an evolving process that will continue to refine as we take steps to put something in place and then continue to review it, hopefully on an annual basis or as needed frequently so that we make sure we can continue to take in all the considerations. Any other comments?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. One, I know that it talks about how public, the city cannot change public murals, I believe. I'm, maybe I'm getting the wording a little more generic. But it, and it says per the law, California law. But I know that in the correspondence that Alicia Rojas shared with us, she actually gave us the code. And I'm wondering if we can add that so that an artist who is curious doesn't have to kind of search around and, you know, they, they can see the code reflected right there. And there's no question, you know, what law or California legislation we're referring to. I forgot to mark down where that was listed. I would like to see that addition.
Would that be like a recommendation? Or do you have a, a reference within the document itself where that should live, your, for consideration?
I know, I was just doing this before I got here. Let's see, restoration, removal, and there we go. It says, so under removal, end of life. Item one says the city holds all rights to murals in compliance with state and federal laws. And I'd like us to list California Art Preservation Act, Civil Code 987, 989, and then the Visual Rights Act, which you've also provided us with for review today. That's Code 106A, I believe.
I'm curious, and I appreciate that, by the way. I'm just curious, Tram. What is the legal guidance from our city folks around citing such things in guidelines? Is that acceptable practice? Is that okay?
Yeah, I think we could. If it is a state and, you know, federal law, then we can definitely reference it.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I want to acknowledge, I realize that the codes and laws may change over time, but I think it would be very helpful to artists who are wondering what law, I mean, it just, it's very generic here. I also noticed that you added next of kin in addition to original artists in several places. But now I'm looking over at removal, end of life. And I don't believe it says next of kin here. And again, just because of the controversy with the Chicano Gothic mural, I feel like it's very important that we include that in every location where we talk about contacting artists. Also, I just, I believe, was the RFP process mentioned in the original guidelines? And I just overlooked it? Or is that, was that always there?
I think it was always there.
Okay. I noticed that where it says RFP, it says to contact the Arts and Culture Office. And I'm just wondering if that's because we don't have the RFP process materials available or because it's so specific to each project or?
It's specific to each project.
Okay. Then also, under design process, it talks about engagement with the surrounding neighborhood and residents. And I'm just curious if there can be any further specification about what engagement means. Because again, it could be interpreted in a lot of different ways. And I think one of the things that Santa Ana is recognized for a lot is kind of that participatory art process where there's the engagement of artists is not just sort of like asking them, you know, you know, do you like this mural? Would you like to see this in the neighborhood? But really involving them in the inception of what the artwork could look like. And so I'm curious if there'd be a way to elaborate on engagement at that point.
Yes. Does that one have a footnote? I forget right now.
It's under design process, number one, neighborhood involvement.
And then two questions. One, if you could just share with us again how these guidelines will be, for lack of a better word, enforced? I'd just like a clear picture about how these will be used or how I should recommend folks use these. And then also, I know that restoration, because we have so many old murals in the city, permanent funding on the part of the city for the restoration of those murals is something that has been called for many, many, many times. And I'd just like to explore how we could probably work toward that goal as a commission.
Well, I mean, the enforcement is part of the issue. That, that takes a lot of resources. It's a whole department. If you want to go out, like LA County, they have a whole department just for mural restoration so that you can, or LA City, rather, to enforce, force it and register it and all of that. So we don't have that resource right now. And that's why it's, it has to exist as a guideline right now. And it's suggestions, recommend, you know, strong recommendations. It will live on our, our website mostly for a reference so that you, they could, they, there is something to point to, mostly for those who don't know where to begin. In terms of funding, yes, that's always going to be a challenge. And so that's something that a subcommittee could talk about and discuss how we can approach that.
And, and in response to those very good questions, I'd like to tie this back to, we are considering a refresh of our Arts and Culture Master Plan because it's going to expire in 2026. So, you know, perhaps these things could be guided. Because one of the things that our subcommittee has been exploring in relation to that is the infrastructure, which is spelled out in that plan. And in order to carry out a lot of the things that we want to do, there has to be staffing who can do it. And we don't really have that. So until such time as we can develop as sustainable practices and ongoing sustained funding, then we don't really have any capacity to, to be more than an advisory capacity at this time. So yes, that's something we can work toward as we look at rethinking or re, considering. Because while the Arts and Culture Master Plan is beautiful and it's been 10 years in the making, was funded for half the time, it's a whole different world since that time. It's been 10, almost 10 years. And so things have happened. We had a pandemic, including. So that's something I'd like to think about as we move toward in that direction.
Any other comments?
So thank you to everyone who provided feedback input on the version of the mural guidelines that we have so far. I just want to really make sure that all of us are aligned on the document itself and the purpose of it. Like we've said, there, as a, especially as a commission here and the Arts and Culture Office as well, there's no capacity for us to really enforce it because Arts and Culture Office is one staff. And our, our one staff person, while very committed, cannot do all of this work by herself. And so I think a lot of the suggestions around actions that we can take related to the, the mural guidelines, that is something that can be explored down the line when we have a greater capacity in this office to really be able to do this work. But as it is, this document is suggestions. It is, they're guidelines for how to follow a process that would be as thorough as it can be. But because they are guidelines, there's no way for it to be specific enough and detailed enough to fit every single artist, every single location's process. I want to encourage us not to get too far into the weeds for something that will ultimately change in a few years when the walls of the city change, new walls come up, old walls come down, new murals are around, new muralists are around. I encourage us to set forth what we feel is sufficient to give guidance to the artists and the people who are engaging with this art in this way. And for us to engage more thoroughly with it when we have the capacity to really follow through with our word on it. I wouldn't want to promise something that we can't do.
Yeah, well said, Commissioner Vu. Yeah, I, I, I'd be remiss without mentioning that our former Commissioner Leonel Flores has been very active with the murals in recent time. I swear, like every time I drive by my neighborhood, he's there with like 10 to 15 youth painting the green parrots all over. It's like on Eddinger between Standard and, and Flower? Standard and Orange. Yeah. All around that neighborhood on Hobart and, and Holiday as well, near the school right there. I don't know where he got those funds from. I really hope that, you know, they're, they're, you know, they're coded with, you know, I really hope that, you know, they're, you know, they're coated with, you know, protections from graffiti, which my neighborhood has all sorts of graffiti all the time. But anyways, I just wanted to uplift him and, because, and I wonder where he got the funding from. Because yeah, it's like, literally like, it's been ongoing for a while now. And it's like, almost that whole area is covered with those beautiful flowers and those green parrots that are so unique to Santa Ana. And yeah, so I don't know if what we could do again is form another ad hoc to discuss some of these things. I know we're not making any decisions right now, but, you know, if there's interest on this commission to be able to jumpstart that again and to see what realistic actions we can take on this item, including advocating with our council members to, you know, to push this item. But yeah, it feels like there's a lot more art than there is funding to protect it in this city, which is a good problem, but also, you know, it puts us in situations where we're not able to protect it and safeguard it. Yeah, and we don't have the funding that LA City does. We just do not. I think I can be proud of all the, how far this commission has gone since I've been here. And I know Tram has been here a lot longer, and she can attest to, you know, just like, yeah, this was a very much a symbolic commission. I mean, but of course, you know, Victor's partner, Pocha, and other folks advocated, you know, for this commission to start, but didn't have money, and there was no teeth, there was no real. And now, look at us where we are right now. And hopefully, we can continue to push. But, you know, and that's where we need a staff that can write grants to, you know, because there's all sorts of grants that, you know, that the state puts forth. But that takes time. And again, we only have one person that does that. And there's just a lot of things, and then that's when things fall through the cracks. And then, you know, things happen where we almost lose a mural. And so, yeah, so I just, I think we need to just be, see where we're at right now, see, you know, how far this commission can go, and then be able to plan. So I'm willing to join that ad hoc committee myself if that was something that could be started. And then, you know, figure out if there's interest from the community, from muralists specifically, to come to the table and have a respectful and constructive conversation about, you know, what steps we can take to, you know, to make sure that these guidelines are as strong as they can be while knowing and realizing where we're at and how much money we need in a moment where we are facing a financial cliff. And so, you know, like, do we want to keep grant funding? Do we want to keep event funding? Do we want to push for more funding? Like, can't have it all, you know? But we have to pick our priorities. So that's kind of how I'm looking at it. But, you know, I'm willing to jumpstart that conversation again and work with our muralist community to see in which ways that we can make sure that these guidelines are as best as they can be, given the limitations, as we continue to advocate and for more staffing for the Arts and Culture Department and so that then they can write more grants, so that we can get more staff, so we can do more beautiful things to protect our murals and the art legacy of our city. Thank you.
Yeah, that said, there are a lot more things that we can consider because these are amazing treasures. And I know there's been initiatives started in the community where organizations are trying to help us get inventory. How do we assess and evaluate what we need to preserve, what's to be restored? There's definitions, you know, around installations, preservation, and restoration. Like, there's a lot. And how do we determine what's part of our cultural heritage and what's decorative? So there's a lot of things that can go deeper. And to Commissioner Vu's point, Vice Chair, soon to be Chair Vu, we can't get lost in the weeds here. So it would be a consideration for the next step. And we do have to prioritize because we have a lot of initiatives that we've been able to keep moving forward. So how do we balance all of that? Yeah. Yes?
There was one point that Commissioner Russell made that I wanted to speak on that I forgot about. I actually really do agree also with citing specifically the state and federal law so that artists, community members, people who are interested in having those murals on their walls can actually read them themselves in their entirety. And I really mean in their entirety because I took some time to read through them, and there's a lot of really specific details, to the point where it's interesting that both of the acts may not fully apply specifically to murals because both of them have a stipulation that if the removal of that art piece would cause significant damage, then they are not covered. The rights are waived under both of these acts. And so if it's even just to understand that part of how the law works, I really incredibly encourage everyone who works with art to understand these acts that support, preserve, and in some ways cannot support, to support the preservation of those art pieces.
Thank you for that reminder. So what further, we had a discussion. Is there any more discussion? Because we will wait for our next steps to see what feedback in writing. So again, we'll put out, how would we advertise it so we can get feedback from the community to provide us more input in writing? As we would like to hear a broad variety of voices. And sure, we want our mural experts and also others. I don't know, businesses or whoever, you know, that's impacted by murals in our community, so.
Yeah, I think the city has some kind of process. I have to go back and ask of how, because they have that kind of stuff where the community is invited to give feedback, and then there would be a deadline for it.
All right, then. This concludes our discussion, our study session. Thank you, commissioners. Tram, do you have any comments that you wish to share with the commission?
No comments this time.
You brought a lot through our presentations tonight. And speaking of presents, I love that Commissioner Hernandez said, "I'm present", which is a present to all of us, our presence here. So the fact that we have this commission and the beautiful things that are happening, I appreciate that. At this time, do anybody, does anybody have comments they wish to share?
Well, first of all, thank you to my fellow commissioners for your trust in me as our next chair, starting next month. This is not something I foresaw for myself, especially upon my first getting nominated to be on this commission. But I take this with great responsibility. And I am very excited to lend the skills, the connections, the drive that I have to see how we can really expand this office as much as we can so that in the future, there isn't this fight over how, what can we do because we can only do so little. So there's that. So I thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to a great year. Switching very dramatically to something else entirely, I actually want to promote an event that's, it's not one event, it's actually a series of events. My day job, my workplace, VietRise, is actually hosting digital literacy workshops in both English and Vietnamese for, it's targeting older seniors, folks who haven't had a lot of experience working with their phones, computers. And so we go over like intro to digital literacy, what that even means. If you've never looked at a computer before, if it's just scared you, we go over each and every part of it, how to navigate it, how to use it to build connections, build networks, how to protect your privacy and security. And this is bilingual material. And I kind of, I'm building off of what Victor was saying. As we progress further, we, in modernity, we see that technology is at once a boon to our people and another a risk to so many of us. I hear constantly about seniors getting scammed out of thousands of dollars because they get fished and they get a phone call, a text message from someone claiming to their niece, nephew needing money. And it breaks my heart to see it every time. So if that is something that any people in your lives are interested in, it is available for registration, I believe. It will be posted on the VietRise social media very soon. Wednesdays are going to be all in English, and then Tuesdays are going to be all in Vietnamese. We really encourage any and everyone to come out to these events to just share this information. I don't think that the internet should be a scary, risky, dangerous place for anyone. And the more people know, the more confidently they can actually access that information. Because there's so much good to be able to access on the internet that that should, that should be what draws people to use digital skills, digital tools, not everything that is scary and risky about it.
I would also just like to congratulate our new chair and vice chair. And excited to hear about the drive to create more capacity for us to take on the challenges that we, our community has been demanding of us and will help make this community of Santa Ana a stronger, more vibrant place than it already is. Speaking of vibrant things happening, I just want to point out a few arts events that are coming up if they're not on anyone's radar. I've been attending some of the summer movies in the parks, and they're great. Tonight is a summer concert. We probably won't be able to make it, but it's just so exciting to see that, you know, the parks are becoming a place that are alive with, you know, Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtle movies sometimes. My favorite part is always seeing the zoo, our zoo mascots now. I'm really in love with these little entities. Also, this weekend, I know I mentioned last time, but the Cool Lab, if you've never experienced it, is such an incredible event. It happens normally at the Fourth Street Market. It is now every other week. And this Saturday is their fifth anniversary. And just to kind of elaborate on what Cool Lab means, is it's this, they have these DJs or these MCs, I should say, and they really take everyone in the room, I've never seen anyone do it like this, and just create this sense of community. And then every person who's celebrating, who performs on stage gets, just feels kind of hugged by the community, and they get to promote their artwork. And so it's both doing some of the things that we had from the Create the Art, Create from the Heart artists, where you're getting to enjoy performances, you're getting to, they get you to talk to each other. I mean, it's just unbelievable. And if you've never experienced it, it's really a must. Shakespeare by the Sea is coming up on Wednesday, the 31st, at Birch Park, which is always fun. And then I'm just really excited, the Casa Blum Studios, in partnership with, or the art space at Casa Blum Studios, in partnership with Community Engagement, has a really fantastic array of exhibitions coming up through December, featuring some of our local artists, our treasured artists and muralists. And so that's also something I hope everyone gets a chance to check out during Art Walk Open Saturday night.
First and foremost, I just want to thank from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of this commission and of the residents of Santa Ana, Chair McNair, for all the years that you've put into this. Yeah, it's like, your name rhymed. It was like you were meant to be in this position, you know? It was destiny, it was fate. And really, yeah, it's been a pleasure serving alongside and, you know, being guided with your leadership and your temperament. And yeah, and you're, obviously, in your day job, like, this is what you do. You're invested in it, you know, you're able to impact thousands of youth in our, in our school districts, in our school systems. And yeah, it's just, and then on top of that, you know, you're doing this work. So, you know, it's like, you just, you must dream art. Yeah, yeah, you're just, you know, it's oozing out of you. But yeah, it's, you've done, as I say constantly, in all the chapters of my life, from when I waited tables for seven years to when I worked in nonprofits for another seven years to when I, you know, it's seven years, seven years. So I did my time, you've done your time. It's time for other folks, you know, to kind of take on that, which, you know, it is, it's work. It is extra work. But I'm very eager to serve alongside Chair Vu. And I know that they will do just as good of work here to continue the amazing work that this commission's doing. And I'm honored to be, to be once again Vice Chair of this commission and to work with Tram and with Mark and with, you know, just everybody here and folks that are, you know, that are part of the beautiful things that happen in the city that make me proud and make me feel like, in a moment when national politics or international politics are just so overwhelming and so heartbreaking and just so, you know, just challenging to the point where like, you just don't really see us getting through it. Or I always say, whenever I talk about politics these days, like, focus on the local. There's so much you could do on the local level. You know, there's so much we can't do on the international, national. But god dang it, like, you know, go to your second city council, you know, get involved in a commission and just be a part of what that you can impact in the world. There's a lot. The harvest is plenty, but the labors are few, as I've said many times on this commission. But yeah, I'm just happy to be a part of this. And so I'm going to be there at the Shakespeare in the Park. I'll put it on my calendar. I'm excited about that. The theater, we gotta promote it because otherwise, yeah, it's gonna, yeah. Yeah, we gotta promote it. It's so important. Nothing like, you know, seeing life, art, you know, in front of your eyes. It's incredible. So, and yeah, I hope everybody stays cool and wears sunscreen and make sure that you're taking care of your loved ones so that we are able to ride through this heat wave and get through this year all in one piece, God willing. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your very kind words. I am deeply moved, more than I can say. It has been my honor and privilege to support this commission. And I look forward as the baton moves. And I did see that for you, Chair Vu, so. And I'm happy that you are taking on this mantle, and you have a great co-leader. And you've been a great co-leader already to me. So, and I appreciate it because also Commissioner Hernandez. And also, I'm not leaving you out. I think you're a wonderful and amazing member of this commission, and we've done really good things. That to say, my big priority has been to really help us focus on what we can do within the constructs of having an Arts and Culture Master Plan. And I was grateful to see that at the State of the City address, the mayor was pointing out, and council members have talked about it, they're talking about the refresh of our Arts and Culture Master Plan. So we are getting traction in this regard. And I look forward to how this commission is going to engage and lead that work so that we can rethink some of the structures and the infrastructure of what we have so we can, yeah, not have to make hard choices. And honestly, I am speaking from my lens of my day job because I have been building infrastructure because I did it alone for a really long time. And it, you can only go so far. And now the work is growing exponentially. So I'm excited to see what the possibilities are that we can realize, no matter what. Because we have a sustainable infrastructure in this commission, whether I'm on it or in the community, enjoying the benefits and fruits of what this commission is doing. So, thank you, everybody. I appreciate all the hard work. Thank you, Mark, Bianca, Tram, for all that you've done. Thank you, Mark, Bianca, Tram, for all that you do. And without any further comments, this meeting is officially adjourned. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 15th at 5:30 PM.